Come on over, you can take it.
Oh, for those houses? Okay. For one house?
Yes, we need it, this is all the tax stuff.
Oh, for those houses? Okay. Oh, for one house?
Yeah.
He's gonna speak to them. Well, set. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the committee of the hall. Madam Clerk?
We're the city manager's report.
City manager's report, it is.
Thank you, Mayor. First, on for tonight is a resolution that's regarding a shared service agreement with the Board of Education for a non-public school nurse. There's also another resolution on for Johnson Park that is amending the closing hours for that particular park to, I believe, from nine to eleven P.M. to allow for evening soccer. Number three is a veteran banner update. We've been working very hard with that, I should say. Ally has been, Allison has been, took that project on and just a quick update, Ally, for everybody.
Yeah, I'm working on getting the approval from PSCNG to use the polls on Summit Ave from Essex Street to Spring Valley. And once we have the approval, then we'll do a resolution on the meeting and have the form ready to get the program going. And here's a, I know it's hard to see, but a mock-up of what the banners look like.
Very good. Quick question, Ally. How many, do we count how many polls? And they're only on one side of the street or on both sides?
They're on both sides. There's a hundred and ten polls.
Okay.
I don't know if we're gonna be approved for all of them.
All right. That's a good start, though.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, last but not least is our CSO and stormwater parks update. I'll ask our city engineer, Chris Wheaton, to come up, please.
Evening, everybody. Check, check, check. Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay. Just a quick update of our major projects. Everything's the same as last time, except we have updated the anticipated completion for Polyfly Park. We are just coordinating that tie-in on Polyfly Road as it requires county coordination and traffic control, which is, has been a little more complicated as Verizon has confirmed the size of the ducts that are in the street there. So, we've had to modify that approach somewhat and we're working through that. We anticipate that we'll be completing that tie-in in two or three weeks. Again, so getting into our CSO projects. Again, we're currently working on the Anderson Street drainage area, which is the sixth major project in sewer separation for the city, separating the stormwater out of the combined sanit, the combined sewers, which include storm and sanitary. On this Anderson Street project, we are completing the tie-ins of the finger streets, if you will, to Railroad Avenue. We've currently completed Clay Street and Burdan tie-ins and we are working our way up Railroad Ave to James Street where we will do that tie-in next. Here's a picture of one of those structures for the tie-in. They are, you know, large connection boxes, connection manholes. And we're also completing the restoration of the streets where work has been completed. So, we have completed restoration on Clay Street sidewalks and curbs, as well as Burdan Place and the south side of James Street. And we're continuing with each block, again, as we're moving northward with the stormwork as well. In other projects, we're, we've just started on the East Kennedy Pump Station Generator. We've started with site work there. The contractor did mobilize and install the generator pad and foundation and install conduits for the generator service. We're anticipating inspections for those, city inspections for those this week. So, the projects that we've been talking about are for sewer separation, which are Clean Water State Revolving Fund funded, shown in green. The city is also working on a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant for the area shown in red in the city. As discussed previously, we have completed the CCTV and cleaning of the sewers in the project area and we are currently in the design process for the design of large culverts for stormwater and a large pumping station along the river to handle stormwater. In parks, the active project right now is Polyfly Park. We have, as I indicated at the beginning, we have completed the majority of this work and what's remaining is the tie-in in the county road on Polyfly Road. Also, in roads in traffic, the Prospect Ave Pedestrian Safety Project is starting next week. That'll just be some, the initial site work. The signal equipment won't be arriving until late October and this project will continue from, you know, from next week, likely through February of next year. And the county has completed the paving program for Johnson and Main Streets and they're currently working on the line striping. It really, it looks, it looks pretty nice. And just, you know, I put this slide in again on backwater valves. I think, you know, not everybody attends every meeting. It is worth repeating that backwater valves have, they kind of only been a requirement in the city since the nineteen seventy-seven Uniform Construction Code was revision in New Jersey. And so, if you do own a home that's prior to nineteen ninety-seven, I'm sorry, nineteen seventy-seven, excuse me, nineteen seventy-seven, it is advisable to evaluate whether you might need a backwater valve and that would be if the sanitary sewer, if you do have a, if you have a basement with a lateral connection that is below the elevation of the street, below the elevation of the surface manhole in the street, then it's possible that sanitary flow may back up into your home. So, it's advised that you evaluate whether, whether that might be appropriate for your home. It's also advised that homeowners do, you know, inspect and maintain those valves. Sometimes they get, you know, something gets hung up, so they should be, they should be checked periodically to make sure that they're working properly. And again, just a reminder that, you know, we're here for your service and, you know, the residents are often the first ones to observe changes in the streets, so just providing our contact information again and, you know, let us know if there's a problem in your neighborhood. We do work to, you know, respond as quickly as we can and take that information into account as we're, you know, evaluating future project needs. That's all I have.
Do we have enough, then, in Campbell Street?
Which street?
Campbell, Campbell and Grove. Campbell, remember that we got a flooding problem?
Campbell.
Campbell, the one that we were out?
Oh, oh, Cam?
Campbell.
Oh, Campbell, yes, I'm sorry. I apologize. Yes, Ryan did do, we did a jet inspection of that area. We found a street sign lodged in that sewer. So, we believe for sure that that was contributing to the problems that were occurring there. So, again, it's important to get that feedback that we can, you know, can inspect and evaluate and determine if something's changed.
But you think that was the only problem or we're gonna look at maybe two, three blocks around?
We, we did evaluate manholes, you know, we did evaluate other manholes in the area. There's another location that we are considering doing a TV inspection.
For those houses? For one house? He's gonna speak to them. Well, set. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Committee of the Hall. Madam Clerk? City Manager's Report, it is.
Thank you, Mayor. First, on for tonight is a resolution regarding a shared service agreement with the Board of Education for a non-public school nurse. There's also another resolution on for Johnson Park that is amending the closing hours for that particular park to, I believe, from nine to eleven P.M. to allow for evening soccer. Number three is a veteran banner update. We've been working very hard with that, I should say. Ally has been, Allison has been, took that project on. And just a quick update, Ally, for everybody.
Yeah, I'm working on getting the approval from P.S.E.G. to use the poles on Summit Ave from Essex Street to Spring Valley. And once we have the approval, then we'll do a resolution on the meeting and have the form ready to get the program going. And here's a, I know it's hard to see, but a mock-up of what the banners look like.
Very good. Quick question, Ally. How many, do we count how many poles? And they're only on one side of the street or on both sides?
They're on both sides. There's a hundred and ten poles.
Okay.
I don't know if we're gonna be approved for all of them.
All right. That's a good start, though.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, last but not least is our C.S.O. and stormwater parks update. I'll ask our city engineer, Chris Wheaton, to come up, please.
Evening, everybody. Check, check, check. Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay. Just a quick update of our major projects. Everything's the same as last time, except we have updated the anticipated completion for Polyfly Park. We are just coordinating that tie-in on Polyfly Road as it requires county coordination and traffic control, which is, has been a little more complicated as Verizon has confirmed the size of the ducts that are in the street there. So we've had to modify that approach somewhat, and we're working through that. We anticipate that we'll be completing that tie-in in two or three weeks. Again, so getting into our C.S.O. projects. Again, we're currently working on the Anderson Street drainage area, which is the sixth major project in sewer separation for the city, separating the stormwater out of the combined sanit, the combined sewers, which include storm and sanitary. On this Anderson Street project, we are completing the tie-ins of the finger streets, if you will, to Railroad Avenue. We've currently completed Clay Street and Burdan tie-ins, and we are working our way up Railroad Ave to James Street, where we will do that tie-in next. Here's a picture of one of those structures for the tie-in. They are, you know, large connection boxes, connection manholes. And we're also completing the restoration of the streets where work has been completed. So we have completed restoration on Clay Street sidewalks and curbs, as well as Burdan Place and the south side of James Street. And we're continuing with each block, again, as we're moving northward with the stormwork as well. In other projects, we're, we've just started on the East Kennedy Pump Station Generator. We've started with site work there. The contractor did mobilize and install the generator pad and foundation and install conduits for the generator service. We're anticipating inspections for those, city inspections for those this week. So the projects that we've been talking about are for sewer separation, which are clean water state revolving fund funded, shown in green. The city is also working on a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant for the area shown in red in the city. As discussed previously, we have completed the CCTV and cleaning of the sewers in the project area. And we are currently in the design process for the design of large culverts for stormwater and a large pumping station along the river to handle stormwater. In parks, the active project right now is Polyfly Park. We have, as I indicated at the beginning, we have completed the majority of this work. And what's remaining is the tie-in in the county road, on Polyfly Road. Also, in roads in traffic, the Prospect Ave Pedestrian Safety Project is starting next week. That'll just be some, the initial site work. The signal equipment won't be arriving until late October, and this project will continue from, you know, from next week, likely through February of next year. And the county has completed the paving program for Johnson and Main Streets, and they're currently working on the line striping. It really, it looks, it looks pretty nice. And just, you know, I put this slide in again on backwater valves. I think, you know, not everybody attends every meeting. It is worth repeating that backwater valves have, they kind of only been a requirement in the city since the 1977 Uniform Construction Code was revision in New Jersey. And so if you do own a home that's prior to 1997, I'm sorry, 1977, excuse me, 1977, it is advisable to evaluate whether you might need a backwater valve. And that would be if the sanitary sewer, if you do have a, if you have a basement with a lateral connection that is below the elevation of the street, below the elevation of the surface manhole in the street, then it's possible that sanitary flow may back up into your home. So it's advised that you evaluate whether, whether that might be appropriate for your home. It's also advised that homeowners do, you know, inspect and maintain those valves. Sometimes they get, you know, something gets hung up, so they should be, they should be checked periodically to make sure that they're working properly. And again, just a reminder that, you know, we're here for your service, and, you know, the residents are often the first ones to observe changes in the streets. So just providing our contact information again, and, you know, let us know if there's a problem in your neighborhood. We do work to, you know, respond as quickly as we can and take that information into account as we're evaluating future project needs. That's all I have.
Do we have another thing in Campbell Street?
Which street?
Campbell. Campbell and Grove. Campbell, remember that we got a flooding problem?
Campbell and Grove.
Campbell, the one that we were out?
Oh, oh, Cam?
Campbell.
Oh, Campbell, yes, I'm sorry. I apologize. Yes, Ryan did do, we did a jet inspection of that area. We found a street sign lodged in that sewer. So we believe for sure that that was contributing to the problems that were occurring there. So again, it's important to get that feedback, that we can, you know, can inspect and evaluate and determine if something's changed.
But you think that was the only problem, or we're gonna look at maybe two, three blocks around?
We, we did evaluate manholes, you know, we did evaluate other manholes in the area. There's another location that we are considering doing a TV inspection further downstream, I believe, in Kansas. It's a ways away from Campbell, but it may, you know, it could possibly influence this area.
The last question I got for you. Any update about Johnson Park? We all expect to go for review?
Yes, we're, we are proceeding with the design update for those documents. As you're likely aware, we do have to go to the controller for this project, so that's gonna take some time. It has to wait until the documents are completed, is my understanding, before we go to the controller. So that's gonna be a step in the process as well.
Quick question. All right, the county did Johnson Ave and Main Street, correct?
Yes.
That was their project. Did we send out nixels on that for everybody? Because I got, I got, we got pretty torn up on complaints on that job. And we know what had to be done, it's just, we gotta make sure people get a heads up, because that's really, people coming from northern Bergen County come down, they come down Kendrick Mac or, you know, one of those roads that need to cross over, and they were like, you know.
I'd have to, look, I'd have to check into that, Mayor. I, it did catch us a little bit unawares when they announced that they would be performing the project. I'd have to double-check.
Right. Yeah, we need to stay on top of that, because even though it's their project, we need to make sure our citizens know.
I understand.
It was, it was pretty bad.
Yeah, so noted. Thank you.
Anyone, any other questions?
Well, you wanna ask about the paving Atlantic Street?
Oh, yes, the water company. So they did Atlantic Street from Railroad up to Prospect? I'm sorry, First Street. But that, are they, who's doing from First Street up to Prospect?
I'd have to check with this, with how far the P.S.E.G. project went up Atlantic Street, because it was, it was due to that P.S.E.G. work that the milling and paving was required. I don't recall whether they, whether that gas project went that far.
Yeah, can you check? Because we need, if not, we gotta get it on our schedule, because it's bad.
Yeah, you can call the lady in charge, Lauren Caesar, she's in charge of P.S.E.G.
That's right.
Yes, yep, that's right. Will do.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Need a motion to open to the public?
Oh, sure.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Anyone from the public would like to speak, please come forward to the microphone. You will have three minutes. Mr. Smith, how are you?
Good evening. Martin Smith, Prospect Ave. At the August meeting, Mr. Caruso said that the Hackensack Traffic Department had decided not to lower the speed limit on Summit Ave between Passaic and Spring Valley Ave. Could you tell me why they came to that decision? What was the reason or reasons for that?
I can certainly send you a copy of the report, if you'd like, Mr. Smith. But they said, in, to be general, that what they said was that the speed limit, based on the amount of traffic, was in, within range of what it should be on that particular type of street, based on the width, the length, the location, stuff like that. But I can certainly send you the entire report, if you'd like.
We have an ordinance in Hackensack that says that all streets under city jurisdiction are supposed to have a speed limit of 25 miles an hour. I would like to know why Summit Ave, between the two points I mentioned, is exempt from that ordinance. I mean, if we're going to have regulations and ordinances, then we should enforce those ordinances and regulations. I don't think we have the right to pick and choose those that we will enforce and those we won't enforce. I mean, it has nothing to do with volume of traffic. It has nothing to do with the number of accidents that have occurred on Summit. It's strictly a question of the ordinance that we have in Hackensack for city jurisdictional streets.
Typically, typically, I'd have to check on that ordinance, Mr. Smith, because typically a, the minimum, or I would say, I guess you could say the minimum or maximum speed limit on any street that's not posted otherwise is 25 miles per hour. So all residential streets, if there's no sign on them, that means that they're automatically 25 miles an hour. I'd have to look and see that all jurisdictional streets are specifically 25 miles per hour, because I, I can't see that on certain streets. There would have to be a little bit more of an increase in the speed limit, besides the county roads.
Well, I mean, Summit Ave is a residential street.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And, you know, these, these people who live in these beautiful houses on Summit Ave have to contend with a speed limit that's 10 miles above what it should be, according to the ordinance.
Again, I have to look at the ordinance.
Could I ask a question, please? So the county is 35?
Correct.
Before it gets to Spring Valley?
Correct, correct.
So somebody's going 35, they basically cross over Spring Valley and instantly have to be at 25.
Correct.
They could be.
If, if, based on what we're saying, yes.
I mean, I think that may be.
And that's part of the reason of what was done in the report by traffic.
I think that's part of the report, is because it's, the potential for, for people to not do that is pretty high. So that's just my opinion.
I will, I will look into that.
Okay, I'd appreciate a copy of that report.
And for the record, I would like to see a 25 as well. But I think that might be one of the causes. You know, here, here is 25, you're coming in at 35. You get here, if you don't stop within a block, and you're still going 30, 35, you could be, yeah, getting a traffic ticket.
I can show you a lot of county roads that go through numerous municipalities, and each municipality has a different speed limit for the same road, even though it's county.
Okay. I'm just seeing where it could be confusing to a driver, you know, if they're not paying attention, which they should be paying attention.
I have a feeling.
Like I said, I'd love to see it at 25.
I have a feeling that even if a road is a county road, that municipalities have some input into the speed that they would like those streets within their municipality to have.
Couldn't agree with you more, especially with streetlights and lowering speed limits, where we've had fatalities. I couldn't agree with you more. But, you know, getting them to bend and change their minds is not easy.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Next person? Good evening, sir. Could you give your name to the clerk?
Good evening, Sam Allen, resident on Kaplan Ave. Good evening, I'm here to data ask for some help with a speeding issue that we're having on Kaplan Ave. Right now, it's impacting our families. We have a lot of new families moving into the community, to have children. That causes, causes a danger to the children in the street, in front of the houses, our own children are, you know, we're cautious of having our own children in front of the houses. On top of that, it's causing property damage. Most of my neighbors have had mirrors torn off. Specifically, my next-door neighbor, her front end has been wrecked twice, where she was out of a car, you know, for weeks. And it's just causing extreme inconvenience to the members of the neighborhood who have to play musical cars, because, you know, we have children who drive, so they're multiple cars. So we're playing driveway games with the cars, because you're afraid to leave your car on the street for fear of damage. So what, you know, what we are asking is, and hoping to get some help with figuring out how to rectify this problem, if it's in the form of speed bumps, cameras, you know, more police presence, even a sign, because I just, I'm glad I overheard you speaking, you know, to the gentleman in front of me. We have, there are no signs, so the assumption of a 25 mile per hour with most drivers is out the window, when my foot is on the gas, you know, so.
So why don't we do, I mean, the other signs, the 25 mile an hour, you know what I'm talking about, right? With the, shows you the speed you're going, right? We have them in certain areas, so we, I have no issue with, they're having a speeding issue in Kaplan.
We did have one of those readers, maybe two years ago, that was up for a little while, and then one of my neighbors.
Yeah, but that was temporary, these are permanent.
Oh, they have them permanent now?
These are solar-powered, permanent speed limit signs that tells you, slow down, you're going 35.
And are those signs just for clocking, or they actually give out speeding tickets?
No, they can't, they're not allowed, by state law, you can't give out a ticket that way.
Okay.
They don't allow it.
Yeah.
Nine years.
It's like the red light camera law, you're not allowed to do it. We wish you could, but unfortunately, you can't. But, and it's about enforcement, so if we have to put some, you know, patrols down there, traffic patrols down there to monitor it, that's what we're gonna have to do.
And then there's also the question of how do we get speed bumps on the blocks?
Speed bumps are an issue. It's been an issue for a while with the, you know, DPW is against them because of the plows. You know, three o'clock in the morning, I don't know if you've ever heard of a plow hit a speed bump? It's not pretty.
No, I haven't heard that, but I have at three in the morning, I have heard the cars zooming up and down.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand. There are other devices on the ground we could use, like rumble strips, stuff like that, we could look into.
That make that noise.
They make that, you know.
The rumbling noise, yeah.
They catch your tires, it vibrates, and it slows you down. So, you know, that's not gonna, that's intended into the pavement. It's not like a big, you know, speed bump. So we'll have a traffic study done on Kaplan. They'll probably put some devices down there to check on how many cars you're getting and speeding. So let me ask you this, so Roland, is it Roland?
Yes.
That's like the cross street halfway down between, now, are you talking between?
Kaplan, we talking from Polyfly up to Summit.
So you're talking on the eastern side?
Yes.
More, so the Summit side?
Yes.
Okay, so it's, and you're, it's really on the hill, it's dangerous there.
The hill is dangerous. So that's where we're asking for help with controlling the speeders on the hill, because it's, it's causing a menace to the neighborhood.
And I've got a method to why I'm asking this question, but is it any certain time of the day worse?
No.
No?
No, all day, all night. It's not, no, no specific time, but, you know.
I was just wondering if it was, you know, because I work at the hospital, but the shift change at the hospital, a lot of people I know park illegally in that area from the hospital to walk.
The legal parking is a whole separate issue.
I know, we're dealing with that as well, but I mean, you know, people get out of work, they want to get home, they're like, zoom off like mad people, so.
Absolutely.
All right, so.
They shouldn't be allowed to just speed, because they're in a rush to get home. We're all in a rush to get home.
All right, so we're gonna take a look at it, we're gonna see about some signage and what else we can do down there, and that whole neighborhood probably, you know, all those blocks, eventually you're gonna have to, you know, get some type of, and it's about enforcement, too. We gotta get our police officers to enforce that, so.
Kenny, do those signs record the data or no?
There are signs that do that, but they're like three times more expensive than the other.
No, I was just, if they did, I mean, then that's a key to us, to be seeing how many of them are going over that limit, you know, and what times, but it doesn't.
Deputy Mayor, all that could be used, all that data could just be used for data, for, you know, you can't issue summonses based on that.
I understand, but you could know, hey, the worst, like the question is John's asking.
You would know, you know, the specific periods.
Here's our peak times that we see abuse, and we could get somebody sitting over there in a police car then, so it would be good if we add that information, but if we don't, we don't. Just curious.
I've been saying this for years, and to me, the only solution is the table bumps, no matter what. The police officer there, they issue a couple of tickets, the radar says that you go over 35, but the only solution is the table bump, and we should be do that before somebody get killed.
We've definitely had hard accidents on that block.
The special in Summit, right in the corner by Suton or whatever.
Yep.
It's how Prospect people fly. And all the streets in Hackensack, right now, the people don't respect. Broadway is only two blocks, and the people fly.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
So the table bump, to me, that the only solution to try to get the people to slow down. That's it.
What about the temporary bumps? You know, the heavy rubber ones?
We've never researched those, yeah.
Yeah, we should look into one, try one, because they could be removed in the winter.
Right.
That's the only way. New York City using it, and different towns in New Jersey, West New York, Jersey City, Inglewood, Tina Fly, Fallow, everybody using it. It's the only way.
What, the temporarys?
No, the table bumps.
Yeah.
They're not really like a, the old one that they, no, they one, they, like they put outside the higher school. You wanna look at the higher school right now, they got table bumps. You have to do the speeding in front of the school.
So we're gonna look into all of it. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Next person, please?
Mayor, I just wanna, you know, I live on Kaplan Ave myself, sir, and one of the major problems is that we're one block from Essex Street. And the people that travel down has that speed, speeding mentality, and when they see that it's little backlog there on Essex Street, they then turn off and use our Kaplan Ave to get through. So they have that speeding mentality at that point. So I do get that as well. So that's, you know, one of the main reasons why we get such a big, you know, speeding problem on Kaplan Ave.
I'm sure you want a solution, too.
Oh, by far, yes.
Yeah, no. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
How are you?
Good evening. Sam is my neighbor, I just wanted to, he brought up the speed bump. I've been talking to Tina Capadana, they're supposed to be doing a counter there. Since July, we still haven't, but I got a quick question. Instead of also putting a speed bump, can we do a no-left turn going up the hill, within a certain amount of times?
No-left turn off of Polyfly?
Off of Polyfly up to Kaplan.
There's one already on one of the streets, I think closer to Hillers.
Yeah, that's the one by the CBS Pharmacy. They still make it there.
Might be Marvin or something else.
You know how a no-left turn?
That's a possibility.
Between hours of, I don't know, seven o'clock in the morning to three o'clock in the afternoon.
That goes into what Councilman Carroll was just saying, people coming down Polyfly towards Essex, they see it backed up, they shoot up the hill.
Right.
Your street or one of those streets. So, yeah, that's a possibility we can look at. That's a good idea.
And for the record, it's Ed Cabral, forgot to mention my name. That's, that's pretty much it, thank you.
Thank you. Next person, please?
We're gonna talk about the parking in Campbell.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good.
Good.
My name is Beatriz, and? I'm Jose Jimenez.
Okay.
Jose. Your address?
From Campbell Ave. We live in Campbell Ave, we grow street. And right now, we has a problem with the parking. We know Hackens has grown up.
Right.
So people, the, some buildings, they coming to park in the car in our area.
Okay.
And in the morning, they coming back for the cars. So it's possible, Gro Street has only between Kansas and Campbell, they can park it only in one side.
Right.
The, between Gro, Campbell, a lot of, they can park it both sides. So we asked to give you the, the both sides in between Kansas and Campbell.
Okay.
The another thing, we wanna say thank you, Mr. Battaglia, because we has the problem with the torment, too. And we calling, and he coming to help to us. He bring the engineer, and they looking around there. So thank you, Mr. Battaglia, for help us.
You're welcome. But then, we look at the situation the other day, we been in the city manager, and then I think I see no problem to allow to park in the other side of the street, because we measure the street, and it's, the width of the street is good enough, yet like in the other side, and that way you guys allowed to be parking in this side of the street, and the other side is.
I'm, I'm working on that from when I met you guys out there. I'm working on it. It just, it takes a little time, we have to change the ordinance, we have to do some measurements and stuff over there, but it, I don't see why it won't get done, because it just makes sense to allow parking on that side of the street.
Fair Street has both sides parking, so.
Right, exactly, yep, yep. It's strange, it's very strange, and I'm still trying to figure out why just that section doesn't allow parking on both sides. It doesn't make sense, but.
Maybe you get that before Christmas.
Yeah, I hope you definitely have it before Christmas.
Excuse me, it's the same thing about the complaint. So I, I thank you for your help, Battaglia, and the city manager. Pay attention about the, today to go to the water, I calling Leo in the commission, the city manager, go to help. Thank you, I appreciate it. About the Campbell Ave, the one-side parking.
About the Campbell Avenue, the one side parking, that's another thing. It is not only Campbell Avenue, maybe another, another street, the same thing. I don't know the youth think or the city think in the future. The Campbell Avenue, the one side parking is correct, for the, the, the one side Tuesday. A lot of people, the community going up about that. Why? And the, the machine clean. Every Tuesday, temporary, they can go to another side, temporary? And I appreciate it because the community going up, and everybody go looking for parking. I respect the area cleaning, leaving the area cleaning.
Clear.
Every, clear, yes. Every Tuesday, you know, and they temporary about, I don't know, maybe put the time, you know, for, for parking every day. Only the, the time clean, leave the area cleaning. I appreciate maybe the city.
I, I wanna look into that and check.
It's not only Campbell Avenue, maybe another, another street, only the one side parking. That's right. For temporary, leave the area cleaning for.
Just during street cleaning time.
Just for the time.
Yeah.
We can do that.
I think it's better for everybody, the community. Thank you.
No problem. No problem, Rudy.
Next person, please? How we doing, Dan?
Good evening, everyone. Gary Tizano, Fairmount Avenue. I have a couple of points. Number one, on the speeding issue, speed tables, if you pay attention to where they're located in certain communities, they have to be identified with a sign on each side that says speed hump or speed bump or speed table. To give you an example, on Phillips Avenue in South Hackensack, on, that runs from Route 46 to actually Columbus Park goes over Route 80. They, they did install one back in the fall because it was really out of control. It was near a school, it was going past City Hall, going past their, their largest public park. And it has cut down considerably because they were actually losing control and hitting the poles and all from what I understand from a few people I know down in the town. So, anyway, if it's identifiable, I don't think, Mayor, that there's gonna be a big issue once everybody understands whether it's a snowplow or a regular vehicle coming over. I just wanna say in my block alone, I'm on Fairmount, and I've lived all over town in the last 70 years. The widest street in that neighborhood, which is two blocks south of Spring Valley. Presently, the police have doing a tremendous job on catching speeders that are coming during the rush hours. Totally out of control. Something had to be done before we can hopefully put in the speed tables. So, I wanna compliment the department for, and the traffic department for being out there. I mean, just tonight alone, I'm in the middle of the block where it levels out between Summit and Main Street, and we have the school down the block. A few cars were coming up at about five o'clock. One person was impatient, had to jump out and pass the car in front, which meant probably doing 50-55. Luckily, the officer, the patrol officer, two cars on the street, they grabbed the guy at the top because that's how fast he, finally got him at Summit. And this is what, what goes on.
That's every day, Jeff.
This is what goes on, and it's going on throughout the town. I'm sympathetic with people from up on the hill where I grew up. I know that's even narrower. So, it's gonna be, it's quite a project to try and curb it, but I think, as we spoke a while back, Mr. Caruso, that it gets out on social media to avoid traffic lights. We don't, we don't like traffic lights. So, they cut, they become cut-through streets, no matter where they are in Hackensack, but they don't respect the speed limit. And then we have the over four-ton vehicles signs where the tractor trailers are coming up my street. They're not delivering locally, whether it's a moving van or, or some other. They're actually, I'll give you an example, Coca-Cola tractor trailer. They're not delivering in Fairmount section. They're going to the mall or Seventeen or South. So, that has to be curbed to a degree as well. And, but anyway, but I wanna compliment you on that. Getting back to the, oh, I'm out already. I wanted to talk on the veterans banner.
Go ahead. Because that's, you're actually gonna be on a committee, so.
Yeah, I wanna be, but I just, just in my family alone, there's seven of us that are veterans. Some have passed, World War II types, but just, I just, I know alone about 40 people that probably would wanna be involved. So, Summit is a start, but we might wanna do State Street as well.
Yep.
Because 150, with the amount of people we have on that veterans site at the hos, at the high school alone from all the different theaters and everybody that served, we have about six or eight police officers that are, that are veterans right now that.
Right.
That, that grew up in town and wanna be on it as well. So, I'm willing to help out.
Yep.
Anyway, we wanna do it, and I thank you, Allison, for looking into that. Deb, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public like to speak? Motion to close the public?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. We will be back at, I need a motion to close the executive session.
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, go ahead.
Just to report on the litigation we discussed, we discussed the Akru and Ock case, where the city successfully achieved summary judgment. We discussed the ongoing litigation involving police officers Victor Vasquez and Rocco Duarte, and we're relieved in terms of litigation.
It was a workers' count case. It wasn't, it was just the name was brought up. I don't know if it mattered.
No, it's not. We didn't discuss that case with any substance.
Okay. So. Motion to close the executive session?
No, that would be the.
Committee of all, okay. Motion to close the committee of the whole.
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed. See everybody in about 20 minutes.
20 minutes.
Madam Clark?
That's okay. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, NJ SA 10:4-6 at SEC, notice of which was sent to the record and the Star Ledger and was posted on the Municipal Bulletin Board.
Okay, roll call please.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent, Deputy Mayor Canestrino here, Councilmember Pataglia, Councilmember Carroll, Mayor LaBrosse.
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I do have a proclamation to read, and it's a very important one. So it reads, whereas New Jersey is in the midst of a life-threatening opioid abuse epidemic, and whereas the Partnership for a Drug-Free New Jersey has designated October 6, 2024, as Knockout Opioid Abuse Day, an initiative with multiple purposes to raise awareness of the potential for dependency on prescribed pain medicine and its link to heroin and fentanyl use, to reduce stigma of addiction and shine a light on the need for recovery support, and to communicate to physicians information on safer prescribing messages found in the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Guidelines for prescribing opioids, which include considering other therapies, setting realistic treatment goals with patients, and discussing with patients the positives and negatives of opioids. And whereas the State Senate and General Assembly jointly resolved in 2016 that October 6 shall be permanently designated as Knockout Opioid Abuse Day in New Jersey to educate healthcare providers, community leaders, state lawmakers, and members of the public about the opioid abuse epidemic and its effects throughout the state of New Jersey and across the country. And whereas Children's Aid and Family Services, the Center for Alcohol and Drug Resources, and the Bergen County Prevention Coalition support initiatives designed to raise awareness about opioid abuse in New Jersey and take steps to prevent addiction. Now therefore, I, John P. LaBrosse Jr., Mayor of the City of Hackensack, along with members of this city council, do hereby declare October 6, 2024, be recognized as Knockout Opioid Abuse Day in Hackensack. So it's a shame that this woman, Von Rudenberg, is here because this is near and dear to her heart. She's fighting the big fight out there all the time about fentanyl use or fentanyl coming into this country. You know, fentanyl, I'm sure most of you are familiar with. Just takes a little bit, and it can kill a lot of people. So very, very dangerous drug, and they're using it to lace other drugs with it. So when you think you're doing one thing, you're doing something you had no plan on doing, and unfortunately, a lot of times, that turns out tragically. And also, you see two of our police officers here tonight. They have to deal with this on a base, not a lot, thank God, in Hackensack, but it does happen. We've had an incident in Riverside Square probably about a year ago, I guess, where five employees of one of the restaurants over there were outside. They thought they were doing one thing, and of course, it was laced with fentanyl. And I think there was one fatality out of that, one fatality out of that, didn't know what hit them, or her, in that case. And it's a shame, so. And the way it's coming across the borderhead from other countries to get here is, it's just not right. It's killing our young people, but it thousands every year. So make sure October 6, we think about that day. Go right to the city manager, approval of minutes, September 10, 2024, town executive and regular meeting. I need a motion.
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, nobody's opposed. And right to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Hackensack has been awarded the bronze level certification from Sustainable New Jersey. We want to thank the Hackensack Green Team and all those who helped the city achieve this level. There was a lot of work that was put into it. The 2024 final, 2025 preliminary tax bills have been mailed out, along with the city's 2025 sanitation calendar. Copies of the 2025 sanitation calendar can be picked up at City Hall. The City of Hackensack is proud to announce that some members of both our police and fire departments will be honored for their courageous actions at the annual 200 Club Valor Awards, which will take place on October 9. Hackensack Youth Basketball is excited to bring back Girls and Boys Basketball Skills Development Clinic in October. Please contact the recreation for more information. Hackensacktoberfest will be held in Atlantic Street Park on October 5, starting at 1:00 PM. There will be music, food trucks, a beer garden, and fun for the entire family. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, very good, thank you. I guess we'll go right to new business. Ready, Deb?
Yep.
Resolution 318-24.
This is a resolution for final adoption of an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, vehicles and traffic for Linden Street. This ordinance has been published according to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion, please?
Open to the public.
Second.
Motion open to the public, offer.
Yep. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. Anyone from the public who'd like to speak to this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing no members of the public, motion to close.
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, the State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 34-2024 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 319-24.
This is a resolution for the final adoption of a capital ordinance of the City of Hackensack and the County of Bergen, New Jersey authorizing an ordinance for certain capital improvements and acquisitions, and appropriating $611,000, and providing that such sum so appropriated shall be raised from the fund balance of the General Capital Fund of the City of Hackensack. This ordinance has been published according to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. Anybody who'd like to speak to this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing no members of the public, motion to close.
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed.
Be resolved that the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, the State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 35-2024 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 320-24.
This is for final adoption of an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, vehicles and traffic to add a new handicap parking space in Section 49.2, parking for the handicapped for Stanley Place. This ordinance has been published according to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion to open to the public?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. Anyone from the public who'd like to speak to this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, motion to close.
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, the State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 36-2024 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 321-24.
This is a resolution for introduction of ordinance number 37-2024, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, vehicles and traffic to add no parking on Park Street at Berry Street.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed.
Be resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 37-2024 is introduced, does now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on October 8, 2024, at 8:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to post said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 322-24.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 38-2024, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, vehicles and traffic to add a new handicap parking space in Section 49.2, parking for the handicapped, Ross Avenue.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed.
Be resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 38-2024 is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on October 8, 2024, at 8:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 323-24.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 39-2024, an ordinance to amend and update Chapter 32 of the Code of the City of Hackensack Police Department to establish the position of chief of police in the departmental table of organization.
I need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
No, you're abstaining, okay, so, aye, 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 what an abstination.
Three's enough.
Three's good.
Be resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 39-2024 is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on October 8, 2024, at 8:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 324-24.
It's a resolution awarding state contract for radio communication repair and maintenance.
Need a motion?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. Resolution 325-24, I know Jerry's going to abstain again, correct?
Right.
Say, resolution authorizing the award of state contract for police body worn camera storage and licensing.
Need a motion?
Offer.
Second. Let's do a roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent, Deputy Mayor Canestrino? Aye. Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll?
Stay.
Mayor LaBrosse.
Aye. Resolution 326-24.
Say, resolution awarding contract to suburban engineering for FEMA/IDA disaster hazard mitigation grant additional hydraulic analysis.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call?
Councilmember, excuse me, Von Rudenberg is absent, Deputy Mayor Canestrino? Aye. Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse.
Aye. Resolution 327-24.
Say, resolution awarding contract to suburban engineering for Faschini Park Phase 1 improvements, bid phase and LS RP oversight.
Okay, I need a motion.
Offer.
Second. Sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. Resolution 328-24.
Say, resolution awarding contract to suburban engineering for Hackensack High School underground storage engineering planning, design, and funding assistance.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. 329-24.
Say, resolution authorizing tax refunds for state board judgments and county board judgments.
Need a motion?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. Resolution 330-24.
Say, resolution authorizing payment of bills.
Need a motion to pay the bills?
Offer.
Second. Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent, Deputy Mayor Canestrino? Aye. Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse?
I abstain. Okay. Okay. So with that, I need a motion to open to the public?
No.
Oh, wait.
Consent agenda.
Got the consent agenda.
You forgot a whole page. You forgot a whole page.
That was on, that was on speed dial, Lily, kidding me? It was on a groove. So is anybody, I know Jerry has a conflict on resolution number 339-24. Does anybody else have any conflicts?
No.
Seeing none.
Okay, the following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda and consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. Consent agenda consists of Resolution 331-24, which is a resolution authorizing the temporary extension of Johnson Park closing hours from October 1st, 2024 until November 30th, 2024. Resolution 332-24 is a resolution authorizing the reappointment of Vincent Caruso as Hackensack City Manager. I gave you a chance. Resolution 333-24 is a resolution authorizing the memorandum of understanding between the City of Hackensack and the Hackensack Uniformed Fire Officers Association, IFF Local 3172, AFL-CIO-CLC. Resolution 334-24 is a resolution authorizing endorsement of proposed Bergen County Community Development Grant. Resolution 335-24 is a resolution authorizing the City of Hackensack to enter into an agreement with the Hackensack Public School District for School Nurse Services for Non-Public Schools, which is the Bergen County Christian Academy. Resolution 336-24 is a resolution authorization for accrued time payout of $9,660 to Fire Lieutenant Michael Martinelli. Resolution 337-24 is a resolution authorizing accrued time payout of $18,403.17 to Communication Operator Rodney Wagner. Resolution 338-24 is a resolution for authorization for the City of Hackensack to join the North Jersey Wastewater Cooperative Pricing System. Resolution 340-24 is a resolution authorizing raffle licenses for Hackensack High School PTA. We need a motion for the consent agenda?
Need a motion, please, to read the consent agenda as it was, to adopt the consent agenda as it was just read?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed.
Okay, and then the one that was pulled?
339-24.
Was Resolution 339-24, A Resolution Authorizing Extension of Leave of Absence for Marza, Police Officer? Need a motion?
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg is absent, Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Bataglia.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll.
Stay.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay.
It's cold in here.
Yeah, definitely got cold in here.
Isn't it freezing in South Bend?
I need a motion to open to the public, please?
Freezing.
Offer.
Need a second? Need a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone from the public who'd like to speak, please come forward, give your name to the clerk, you will have three minutes.
Let me turn it off?
Yeah, it's cold.
It's freezing.
Good evening, yes, I'm Richard Servo on Spring Valley Avenue. If anybody's ever driven down Spring Valley Avenue, you would know what the heck is going on there. But, you know, I don't know really what, I don't know where to start, okay? Because things I mentioned, when I'm here, over the weeks, months, years, okay? Have not been addressed. So you, you just listen to what we say and say, we'll see you later. So, I'm changing my approach tonight, okay? And I just saw that they reinstated Mr. Caruso. So from now on, I'm not gonna even, you know, mention what I'm interested in, in speaking about to the council. I'm gonna mention what I want to say to Mr. Caruso. He is the city manager. It's a city manager form of government. The council and the mayor and the deputy mayor, for sure, do not listen. I mentioned so many things here that's never been brought up. The, the traffic, of course, that, that was number one. The tax rebates, why we can't go to a five-year again instead of this, you know, these giveaways everywhere. I, I guess they're still going on too. But the five-year plan is, is the best plan, okay? But there's so many things that, you know, you just ignore us. And so I'm gonna start talking to Mr. Caruso and see if he could help us with, with some of the problems in the city. You know, I mean, seriously, I think taxes went up again, you know, everything, what's, what's going on? It's a, there, there's no, you're just yesing us, you know what I'm saying? You sit there, yes, okay, sure. And tonight, I was shocked that someone actually brought up traffic on Fairmount Avenue, okay? Fairmount is, go over to Fairmount, it's like you think you're out in the country, okay? There's nothing there. Okay, there's an occasional truck, or he mentioned the, where is he, he's gone? There's an occasional couple of cars there. But Fairmount Avenue is, is a wide street, it's not even used, okay? And Spring Valley Avenue is, is crazy, okay? I don't see why, running parallel with Spring Valley Avenue is Route 4. Why can't they be told or, or guided towards, take Route 4, that length of, of Spring Valley? And then you can actually come right up on Hackensack Avenue and do your business in Hackensack or whatever. So it's, it should be suggested, or there should be a sign put up, go use Route 4.
Go around 4.
Go to Route 4. And so what else can I say? Mr. Caruso, thank you for your, your presence here.
Mr. Caruso gets a lot of calls during the day from citizens, so he'll...
All right, well, congratulations on being reinstated as our city manager. And maybe we should start thinking about, you know, city manager form of government rather than this, you know, this nonsense that's going on all the time, okay? Thank you very much.
Go Mets.
How's it going, guys?
How's it going?
Good. Next person, please?
Good evening, everybody.
How are you?
Okay, all right, I'm good, thankful and blessed. We're here basically to speak about the parking signs that you guys are gonna put up in our neighborhood. They're not up yet. But here's, here's our ploy. Haynes, Berry, Stanley, those areas are gonna have restricted parking, two-hour parking. I've lived on the corner of Passaic Street in Haynes over, over 69 years. My family is a four-generation home on the corner of Passaic and Haynes. The address is actually Passaic Street. But we have an entrance on Passaic Street and my house has an entrance on Haynes Street. So we can't park on Passaic Street. We need to have consideration for those of us who actually have a Passaic Street address so we can park on Haynes or the side streets. If you're on Second and, yeah.
On Haynes, is there any, I'm familiar with Haynes, I'm just not familiar with the parking down there as far as restrictions?
Well, there's okay parking, now, anybody can park there, but they're gonna put this, put the signs up, two-hour parking.
Well, that's for, for non-residents.
Well, I understood you have to have the Haynes Street address or, or Berry Street address. We don't have that, we have Passaic Street. I'm on the corner of Passaic and Haynes.
I understand, so can we look into that?
So we need to have an exception. It's 263-265 Passaic Street.
I know, this past week, I authorized permits, parking permits, for at least two people that had Passaic Street addresses?
Okay.
That were on the corner. Because they had an entrance on one of the streets that was covered. And they also had, you know, but their address was actually on Passaic Street.
Well, that's me, I'm on the corner, I'm right on the corner, that's my house. Four generations, 85 years.
What's the actual street address?
263-265 Passaic Street.
Okay.
I'm 247 Passaic Street, we're in the middle. And then he's...
I'm at 244 Passaic Street.
So...
There's no street names?
And these are multifamily homes, I'm a two-family, that's like a three-family there. So we park on those side streets.
We came here two weeks ago when you were putting the thing up and the lady sent me around the corner, then lady sent me upstairs, then they sent me back around the corner. And they said we not gonna be allowed to use their pass because we don't have the actual address for Haynes.
Right.
On Second Street. So she said, come here and tell you guys.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, no problem.
And plus, I have two kids that come in late at night. Yeah, we always park there.
Yeah, so they were parking before and now it's suddenly can't walk.
Like I said, I, I know I issued two already. I authorized two.
Between, what's that? What's the next?
Haynes, Berry, Stanley.
Right, there's two houses, yours and then there's a business apartment building on the corner.
Oh, yeah, they have about three.
New people moving in because the guy walked out, so it's mad people moving in.
Yeah.
Just come down when you can, when you get a chance, just come down, go to the city manager's office and see my assistant, O.C. She's familiar with this and she'll, she'll authorize the permits for you.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, all right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That's fair, that's fair. That was quick.
That way you see.
How y'all doing?
Okay, so I'm okay.
As my partner there, Cal, Hackensack graduate? Take care, guys.
Have a good night.
Hi, Baron Davis. Two quick things. I came also in support of the people that just spoke. Because on Stanley, I know it's, it's gonna be good for us, but most people on my end of Stanley have a driveway. So that's gonna be good for us, but I understand their situation where they don't all have driveways and because their situation, so I'm just standing here in support of what they came down for. My second thing, I saw as one of your resolutions, a proposal to get another police chief for Hackensack. It's about time. It's long overdue. But what I'm also asking, the police chief's position is very important, as we all know. If you have somebody that's the head of your department that you're not happy with, it affects your job. As a nurse, I knew that. And we had an outside agency come, Hackensack Medical Center had an outside press gainy come in to support my staff and ask us what we thought. And by what we thought, they made a decision that that person was not the right person for us. I'm saying this decision should not be made just by the council. The chief and the police work for the city. They work for us. We also pay the taxes. I think the community has a right, we can't vote, we have a right to have a say. And the police definitely have a right to say who you're putting in charge of our police department. It's a big city now and it's getting bigger with all the apartments going up. So I think as you look for a chief or however it's done, the community ought to be able to see who you are putting up as a possible chief for the City of Hackensack. And I stand with the police and feel they also should have the majority vote on who becomes their chief. Because if they're happy and they work well, guess what? We're happy because they're happy. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Can I mention one more thing?
Go ahead, Cissy.
You don't have to come up, you can do it from there.
Okay, on Second Street where the school is, across the street from the park? I go down that street every day and a lot of parents are always trying to cross going over to the school. Can you put a crosswalk there or a cone to say slow down or stop?
Second Street in what, Cissy?
You know the school, daycare, across from Second Street Park? I forgot the address. It's right, it's a daycare, Bergen County Daycare something.
Oh, that, Greta Bergen. Greta Bergen is there.
A crosswalk, because everyone and the mothers are trying to cross right there.
He'll have traffic.
That's across from, across from Carver Park, right?
Yeah, but right in front of their school, they need a crosswalk where they need to walk to.
He'll have traffic looking to it, try to catch them.
Because every one of those mothers is having, they're struggling, getting the kids out of their home room here. You know, the cars need to stop.
Yep.
I stopped because I live in the neighborhood, but everybody doesn't stop. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. Kathy, would you like to say something?
Just briefly, I usually try and just give a little bit more meat to some of the things that were on the agenda that maybe I'm personally involved in. And one of the things tonight is we passed an ordinance for capital improvement of $611,000. Just so folks know where this money is going. We're doing a couple of things in the fire department. Some of it is going to the firehouses itself. Some other things, they needed a new fuel pump. The Inadmissible Court, we've been working on their lobby, there were some asbestos issues there as well. We're putting some money there. Police cars, we needed to purchase some additional police cars. A small fee for DPW and a substantial amount going to sewer work on Jefferson Street, for the Jefferson Street sewers. Two other things on the agenda too, I think we're mentioning, you know, that we continue to do more and more work throughout the city in improving our sewers. There's one authorization for suburban. To, we're looking at putting some water retention under the Hackensack High School fields. So this is again, an initiative that we're still exploratory, doing testing, et cetera. So, and that will again, help with water storage in that particular area. So that's on the agenda. And we're starting our work on Green Street. That was, you know, after we finished what we call the Clay Street area, the Clay Anderson Street area, where our primary focus has been over the past few years as far as sewer work goes. Because that was identified as the area, the lowest-lying area and the area that needed the improvement the most. The second-most area was the Green Street area. So, you know, we have some grant money and we're working together to secure even more grant money. So we're starting to do some more analysis there over in Green Street and there was a proposal for that on there as well tonight. At the committee of the whole, you know, we heard as well as we heard tonight, speeding issues, trying to come up with solutions. We, we've been hearing that throughout the city, speeding issues, parking issues. And the city manager is, is looking into different options for that, some good speeding signs. You know, whether we can do some speed bumps or something to help slow down traffic. But I know, Rich, you've been playing about that for years and we, we're hearing it from more and more people throughout the city. So hopefully we come up with a plan, Vinnie, that can address everything. You know, that we know when we see areas that are in trouble, we have the right solution for ourselves. So just again, to make that, that information available, you can always watch the committee of the whole and hear more about that discussion. Thanks, everyone, for coming. Looking forward to Oktoberfest, which is October 5th. October 5th. That's always a big hit in the downtown, the Atlantic Street area. Our breweries get involved, there's music, there's vendors, there's food trucks. It's, let's pray for nice weather and we get all our Hackensack folks out and enjoy a lovely day. Thanks again, have a good night.
Okay, Leo?
Well, we continue to try to improve the, the city around and try to prevent the flooring problems problems, and we are working and try to do better maintenance with the sound pumps all over. You know, we got like about six stations and some pump they're gonna be replaced in the next few months. Like I said before, Stanley, Berry, Berden, all these streets, they're gonna be done by November. The recreation socket program got around two hundred and fifty kids, and the program is going really good. Gene, my friend Gene is looking for more money that way we can continue to do the paving. And I'm gonna check tomorrow about the section that the mayor was talking about, Atlantic Street, and Major Street and Johnson Avenue, they already finished the paving, they were doing the stripping today. And it's no question that no matter what we do, the only way that people are gonna reduce the speed in the city is by putting table bumps. We don't, should be wait for somebody to get killed like it happened in Holy Fly Road, we should be go and put the table bumps, and the only way that people are gonna reduce the speed. And maybe, and maybe one more week, the command center gonna be ready, and this is a room that from there, we can monitor the city, and we can see in real time the different sections and the way when we see a problem, we can, the dispatcher can send a police officer right away, and that's gonna help to try to keep the city safe. Thank you for coming and good night.
Thank you, Jerry?
Good evening. It's quite a coincidence, just hours after I was informed, a member of the council that I planned to go public about a recent racial incident involving a council member, a news article emerged stating that I would be removed from the ticket in the upcoming election. I wasn't even given the courtesy of being informed before this article came out. I would like to thank everyone who sent emails, text messages, and phone calls with your outpouring of concern about this article. On a positive note, I am pleased that the city council is finally moving forward with the position of police chief. I would like to thank everyone who has attended tonight's meeting physically and remotely. Take care and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. So I have a little statement I wanna read myself. So, I understand Councilman Carroll's surprise at seeing that, but I was the one who was really surprised, because I was caught by surprise after receiving a call from the deputy mayor that tonight Councilman Carroll was gonna read a statement that this council was racist. Now, there's a lecture coming up in September, oh, sorry, May of next year, and now I've got a councilman who I've known since our kids were young boys, saying, inferring that I'm a racist, all right? It's happened from the dais out here, but I certainly didn't expect it from somebody I've known for so long. Then I've also found out, and this was verified, that our city attorney spoke with Councilman Carroll, and the same conversation happened, and that statement was to be read tonight, that this council is racist. Now, I don't know whether this is based on something that happened recently in one, in a park or at a school somewheres, with another member of this council, I'm not gonna get into it, but that certainly deserved, didn't deserve that type of reaction, that you're gonna get up there and call us racist. That's a, that's a serious comment to make to people, very serious. I took it to heart, I'm still hurting from it, all right? So, yeah, you got bushwhacked, so did we, all right? Something like that deserves to be, and, and I was told I was getting a phone call, and I never got the phone call. So I didn't get the phone call, and I did what I needed to do. I'm the leader of the LaBrass team, it's my name up there, and you're about to call me a racist, so I, I did what I thought was necessary to move forward. And that, and that's exactly what happened. If you want to deny it, Mr. Carroll, that's up to you, but there's absolutely no way, I think the lady sitting next to me would lie to me about something like that, or the gentleman down here who happens to be an attorney would lie to me about something like that. Speaking of Hackensack, we have the Oktoberfest on ten-fifth, at ten-five, I recommend everybody come down for it. Twenty twenty-four tax bill, twenty twenty-four through twenty-five tax bills going out, or have gone out. Our police and fire are being honored, as was mentioned, at the Two Hundred Club this coming Thursday, next Thursday?
It is?
Next Thursday. Congrats to them. The lady next to me and myself, happy to say and proud to say, we're actually honored by the Hackensack Regional Chamber of Commerce last, what day was that?
Last Thursday.
Last Thursday. And we had a great event down at Bellagio along with Dr. Underwood from the hospital and Lauren Ziza, who recently was the director for the Chamber of Commerce, and it was a great event, and it was a great honor for us to be honored. We work very closely with the Chamber of Commerce, Kathy's the liaison, great relationship, great partnership with them, and they help our merchants, especially in a town where business is growing, like Hackensack. What else do I have here? Speeding is a big problem, I'm hearing it more and more and more, and yes, Mr. Servo, we do actually look into it, believe me, we just don't forget about it. And I will have the city manager, again, ask him to make sure we look and check what the speeding is like on your, on your street. Really looking forward to the completion of this Railroad Avenue stormwater project and retention project and the sewer separation project. It's been going on now probably, what, three years? Two, three years?
More than that.
Reverend Davis, when did we start digging down there? Two years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, we knew it was gonna be a while, and, you know, thank God, it's gonna be relief for, for all the people living down there, and hopefully it, you know, fingers